I'd like to call the October twenty first, twenty twenty five, Wall City Council meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please call Rose?
Can we pause just a minute because it's not coming through the owl for whatever reason? Yeah.
I thought I saw him.
We'll have to get it to move there.
I can probably plug something.
Mary, you're telling me to do that? I am, while you're ending my line. You stopped me.
There should be another, another cord to plug into the USB. Over here. So give me the option to switch. It's a little bit. But we aren't going to have it recorded if we don't get it to come through the owl. So.
You're just not getting audio?
Yeah, it's just, I could tell because it just was on my computer when it said the recording has started. You tried to unplug it and plug it back in, didn't you?
Yeah.
Same as system that you just. No, it has to say owl. Oh.
Hold on.
So it's just not. What was it? Was it not plugged into the?
Uh, the white cord was plugged into the orange one and the orange one wasn't plugged in.
Good job, Mike. Thank you. I still don't know if it's going to work though because it's not giving the.
All right, go ahead.
Do you think we're?
Yep, you should be.
We're good. Okay, we'll try that again then. I'd like to call the October twenty first, twenty twenty five, Wall City Council meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please call Rose?
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hawk?
Here.
Mike Anderson?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
You have a form.
Let us stand as in the place of any. Definitely not to second. I second. Would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to your flag and to the United States of America and to your everlasting foundation, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
We have any order of business for emergencies? Do we have it?
Sorry.
And do? Do you have any attendance on Zoom?
No, there is none.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Vote.
Dan moved.
Okay.
Jerry seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post motion carries. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to declare? Hearing none. The minutes of the October ninth city council meeting is in your packet. Do, if you've had an opportunity to review those, do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Dan moved.
Second.
Mike seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Also in your packet, today are your claims for the city of law. That amount is fifty four thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars and seven cents. There's also claims from the fire department amounting to seventeen thousand, three hundred seventy two dollars and eight cents. And claims from the library for four hundred ten. Does anyone have any questions about any one of those claims presented to us this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the claims for the city of law, fire department and library?
So move.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Also for your review is the expense and revenue budgets. Well, of course, financials. A building permit from Cornerstone Industries for two grain bins. With a height variance that has been approved by planning and zoning. A new home construction on Wall Lake Road.
We need to remove the other buildings at this time that schedules just didn't mesh to get that reviewed, so. We'll break back for a review next thing.
Okay, so that will come back to us next month. Is that correct?
One. Next meeting, yes. Or hopefully, if they can.
Oh, no.
Because they're closed now and I know who's leaving, so we'll just have to see.
Okay, the one for Nathan, the, the fifth one is going to be removed because we weren't able to get that signed. Okay. So that brings us to item number eleven, and we have an agenda request from Savannah Williamson.
Hello, so I'm essentially asked to be put on the agenda to represent the chamber. I am the acting president of the chamber, as we do not have director, we do not have a president. So as a vice president, I am now the president, acting president. So good evening, council members. As you're probably aware, it's been an emotional and trying time for our chamber board. I'd like to reiterate that I fully support and agree with Natalie and Louise's comments from the last council meeting. While I could say a great deal about the recent challenges, I have consistently encouraged our team to take the high road, even when we don't want to, and that's exactly what I'll do tonight. The chamber does remain strong. All our committees are still in place. Our events are continuing as planned with strong participation. We have dedicated board members stepping up to ensure continuity and accountability. We will be working to fill open chamber positions in the coming weeks. We ask for patience from our members and from the community as we navigate necessary transitions. The work continues, and regardless how others, how others operate, we remain committed to serving our members and the community with professionalism and integrity. So we have we have a couple of requests on behalf of the chamber that we'd like to take a look at. We'd like to establish a standing chamber event agenda spot for the city during the city council meetings. We feel that regular communication keeps us accountable, visible, and aligned with the council's initiatives. Other cities maintain this practice successfully, and it fosters collaboration rather than confusion. That way, I think then we wouldn't have the ask to fill out an agenda request unnecessarily. I'm not sure if this has to, how these have to be voted on individually or do I hear all the requests first?
So you want every meeting to be on every meeting because that's twice a month?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Additionally, we propose that the BBB funds be distributed in one annual lump sum versus continually submitting receipts. We would provide the yearly financial report for transparency. Many other chambers operate in a similar fashion and manage their funds this way. It simplifies administration and allows us to plan responsibly for an entire fiscal year.
So is there a time that works better? I mean, for, like, what about us, Carolyn? With that? For a time that works better to do the lump sum is the lump sum?
Well, we don't receive the BBB funds in one lump sum, so that's.
How many savings?
Same as our sales tax revenue, it's received from the state monthly.
And then funding and management responsibilities. So our second topic, main topic concerns clarity and separation of management responsibilities for the chamber director while maintaining the existing support structure. The chamber board respectfully, respectfully request that all management personnel duties, including higher, higher end performance and employment terms fall solely under the chamber board. That the chamber directors focus be exclusively on chamber operations, community engagement, and supports members without administrative interference from city departments. We request that there not be any reduction in existing and future support for the chamber. The chamber seeks to continue receiving current funding benefits, office space, and other city-supported resources, ensuring seamless operations. We propose that these operational processes, we'd like to request that they the city removes the chambers, chamber director's job description and application from the city's website until it's been revamped and approved by the chamber board for posting. Approved postings for the chamber director with the chamber board president. I see that it's on there currently. I'm not sure if that's an open position or if it's just posted. The chamber director position is on there and the application to the chamber director is on there as well as the public works. I did not see the finance officer listed on there, so I wasn't sure why the chamber director was open yet at this time. Especially with an old job description of community center duties.
We'll check into that. I wasn't aware of that either.
All applications for the chamber director position be directed by and handled through the chamber board. The chamber director will submit time sheets to the chamber board officers for review and approval. Approved time sheets will then be forwarded to the city finance office for payroll, maintaining city compliance while reinforcing chamber oversight. And then all communication from city staff regarding the chamber should go through the chamber board, either via formal email or during public state, public council meetings. We believe that the structure strengthens accountability, ensures fair division of responsibilities, and supports a collaborative yet independent working relationship between the chamber and the.
And so how would we go about that? Do we have to go through each one individually and do we have to vote on it or consensus on it for each request? I, I would imagine that each individual, like the funding and stuff should be by itself, correct?
I think so.
Yeah, and then just do all three separately.
Yeah, I think so.
Probably be the cleanest, huh?
Can I ask one question? Did you say we cannot raise or lower your funding? Is that to you?
No, I just requested that there not be any reduction in existing and future support, meaning.
No reduction.
Repeat what, yeah, repeat what we received today.
I'm not on the finance committee, but if a town really began hurting, we wouldn't be able to live up to no reduction. Every committee would be getting reducted, reduced, so I'm not sure how you would put that into writing that we would never reduce it. I just worry about it financially being stated that way.
I do, I, I understand that. My concern would be is that based on recent events, I worry that we're going to be picked apart. And that that would be the next thing that would happen to the chamber, since obviously our director, our chamber director was run off. And so the next thing that I worry is that, that the city administrative office would be poking their fines.
You're standing, you're insulting a whole bunch of city employees right now by saying they're running off. Had they waited about two hours, we had a issue that we were going to discuss. That they did not let the city council finish the matter. But I would appreciate it if you quit insulting. We have six other employees. And you use one new and it's been here six months to criticize all the other employees of the city. And that just doesn't seem right to me.
Jerry, you were in and heard all of the complaints that were brought forward to the city council.
But I never had one, one issue with these peoples in, in them. You didn't bring these people in and let us hear it from them. I did not get to hear any of these people's stories. But that's fine. It's done and over with. But you shouldn't be sitting here degrading good city employees, but everybody were.
Because my concern is that our funding would be picked apart. No matter who's picking it apart. That, that would be my concern. The chambers.
I feel we're here to get the chamber back up and going, and we don't need to sit here.
That's why, that's why I'm standing here.
No remarks.
Savannah, I have a question for you. Do you think we could do the BBB funding on a monthly basis as we get it? Would you be okay with that? I think that would be helpful.
As how does it come out?
Monthly, that's correct.
We have to continually submit receipts, get that funding.
On a monthly basis or a quarterly basis?
I'm not quite sure because I'd have to find out from our producer.
So Carolyn, can you clarify that? Is it a quarterly basis that they submit or is it monthly?
Yes. Whenever. Just whenever they have enough receipts, they will, they want to submit. It's never been set in stone when they have to submit them, but we don't receive the revenue only once a month. So I kind of question being able to give them one lump sum.
Well, and that's, that's what I was addressing, Carolyn. If, if the chamber could just get those funds on a monthly basis, which Savannah agreed to, I, I think that'd work for both of us.
Because, yeah, it fluctuates every month, so.
But you'll be submitting receipts, right?
Either.
What's that?
Are you not wanting to submit receipts?
Well, do we, do we need to or?
By the auditors, yes. My auditors request that.
We can still submit receipts. But we like to get that funding regularly.
They just got to be submitted. When they're submitted, then I send out monthly to the library. Or not actually monthly, but before every meeting. Gets sent out to the library, the chamber, and the fire department. Please submit your receipts to be paid at that council meeting.
So I'll, I'll double check that and then bring that back to the council at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we understand that you will need to submit receipts.
We'll, we'll cancel that request. I'll get some more details on that and then bring it back to the next council meeting.
Very good. Okay, thanks.
And how would we go about putting them on the agenda ea- each time?
Well, if you look at the claims that we just approved, there was BBB funds on there this night, right? And it was for the amount of.
No, my question is how do we put them on the agenda for them to do their report?
Well, they have to be on every agenda.
And that, like, do we have to pass or they can just be put on it automatically? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you look under the city claims, I saw that. BBB funds, seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty seven dollars were, was what was submitted. And that's what's, you'll get a check for that.
Yeah.
So it can be monthly if that's what you.
I'll double check and replace them if that request.
Okay, so finances. Maybe not. Okay. Okay, so so that's, I am number one, so what's? You kind of went through that so fast, so couldn't even keep up.
Yeah.
Would you happen to have this in writing that you could share it off?
I do. My next request would be that the funding and management responsibilities of the chamber be separate from the city without losing existing, the existing.
Okay, so are you talking about like this year, for next year's budget, you submit as a hundred and twenty thousand dollar request? Is that what you're referring to right now, which covers your tourism and your retail budgets?
No, that, that would be whatever the city pays on behalf of the chamber normally. So it is.
One sixty three.
Yeah.
For wages or wages?
That's it.
Oh, and sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't one sixty three, sixty three, sorry, sixty three, yeah, fifty five for the wage and, yeah. Thirteen on that. Roughly.
Okay, so help me understand.
So you just, the financials, the city has associated with the position?
The position, we're talking specifically.
The wage and the benefits, which came to the sixty three.
Right, exactly. So they are moving away from being a city employee now.
No, no.
No, they're staying with the city employee.
That's why they're, that's why they're requesting sixty three, sixty three, that would be insurance.
The wage and insurance.
Right. Okay.
And then we would, we would request then, make sure, you know, increase as such as a pay increase or six month review or whatever, we'd submit that request to the city council.
So Savannah? Okay.
That's, that's my, that's my answer to this.
Okay, was there something?
No, that was just how, kind of how that would follow suit, basically of the management personnel duties, including the hiring, performance, employment, fall, fall solely on the chamber board. That the chamber director's duties would solely focus on chamber operations, community engagement, and supporting its members without administrative interference. Not to, obviously, obviously, if, if all all groups are being, you know, reduced, I wouldn't think that the chamber wouldn't have to take some sort of reduction, at least if that's something that the city. My worry would be is that all of a sudden we get the pay cut or something without justification. And then obviously, kind of talk about job description, being on the city website. Time sheet, how they would be submitted. So obviously, the, the city can still write the, can complete the paycheck for the, for the director and obviously taxes, benefits, and such.
So if there did come a time where the pay would be questionable, funding, whatever, I would imagine that we would reach out to your board and have a conversation and just kind of ahead of time. Obviously, because then you guys can budget for what you need to do.
Yeah. That would be your expectation.
So with that being said, it looks like four points here, Savannah. I'm wondering if we can't put the third one with the fourth. And make it three, being that they're both kind of financially, that we request that there not be any reduction in existing support. Put that with, like, at the end of, the chamber seeks to continue receiving current funding benefits, office face, and other city-supported resources, ensuring seamless operations and partnership continuity. And there not be a reduction in existing support. Maybe just tie those two together without filtering anything. I'm not sure I understand how those two are separated.
They're just.
One, the, the chamber wants to maintain hiring.
Yeah.
Performance review, operations. They want to, they're asking for the city to still be the employer of the chamber executive director. But that, to stay on city payroll, but the job description and that sort of thing be removed from the city's website and be subject, subject to the approval of the chamber board. Is that accurate, the request?
Well, the only reason I'm asking about the job description on the, because I didn't realize it was going to be posted or that it was out, because the position wasn't open. So I wasn't aware that it was going to be posted and it's on the city.
I just want to be clear on that. So the last two hires that we had was a public works employee and the chamber director, and we have been switching to a new website, so that was just an oversight of not getting that over, so.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was posted or had been. I just, I don't look at the city's website on a regular basis, so I wasn't quite sure if it had recently been posted or how long it was on there, because I noticed that it was, the, the job description hadn't been updated since we essentially had to remove the community center duties.
So they're going to take this, the money for the salary and the benefits, and then they will write the check to their director.
No.
From the city. City payroll.
It would still stay on city payroll.
Didn't you say in other communities that, Nathan, that they had similar?
In most communities that I'm aware of, the chamber executive director is not on city payroll. They're just, kind of like Mary just alluded to, they would come and request a budget from the city. And the city pays the chamber to fund that position, and the chamber hires the director. And the chamber has them on payroll, or maybe they have a ten ninety, ten ninety nine and they've been a contractor, whatever agreement they might have with the director. But that, yeah, there, there, there's no employer-employee relationship between the chamber director and the city. In most, there are some municipalities that hire it out like y'all have done, have been doing.
Are those smaller towns that do that because it's, because the chamber director would be the only employee, so they'd have really high insurance to pay?
Yeah. There's just no way for us to try to do that. There's just no way that we're going to be able to hire a director without
benefits and for us to go search for our own is going to be very farfetched to be able to do.
I think in order to make it work, we we have to do it.
Yep, yep.
I think we just move forward and, and turn it over besides the, obviously, the the financial side of it and the, the, the benefits. And the final approval would still come through the us correctly, the board would take care of like the hiring and stuff, and then they'd come to us with your recommendation like that or?
Wasn't, wasn't exactly our intent.
Okay.
Well, if I could just interject, so because they would be on the city payroll and my auditors review that, if it's not in the minutes that this person has been hired at whatever rate, they're going to tweet me on that.
You're only going to be in the minutes because I'm going to give a report, we're going to, the board.
But they have to give a.
Okay, cool.
Okay, I'm just saying that's.
Yeah, I would say when you guys make your selection, you know, we can probably go into executive session and discuss that and then approve it coming out.
So I would like this clarified. I am you are trying to follow your bylaws, which I just read those about the week, two weeks ago, okay, which indicates that, yes, you do the job description. You hire them, right? And you describe their duties and they work for you. But I understood that if the city writes your check and gives you the what's that called, that you get at the end of the year.
Have to be too.
That makes them a city employee, and I thought we were trying to move it over so that it was going to be a chamber.
I think in order to get this going, we, this is what we need to do, in my opinion. With us being a small town too, and the chamber not having the funds unless it comes from the city, I think we have to go down the route.
Of course, giving them the dollars, yeah.
And if it, I mean. And if it, I mean, there's nothing that says that if it's not working, we can't revisit it and and take a look at it, so I think.
But but Mary stating that you think that the chamber should just operate on its own without being a city employee, is that what you're saying?
We it it is possible to give you the sixty-three thousand dollars. We can transfer that to you and then you could pay.
We're not wishing to do that. I'm not gonna take over payroll and tax responsibility.
I don't blame you, huh? I don't blame you.
Plus, I think you have to have an insurance and.
So the sixty-three thousand is just gonna stay in our budget, we're not gonna move it anywhere, it's it's on our side. And we will be issuing the end of year information, so technically that is still.
This is going to be a city employee that we have no control of. What happens if the city employee gets in trouble legally, whatever? Does it come back to us or the chamber or?
If it come to both, the liability would probably rest on both of them. The chamber board has.
Just it's confusing.
The chamber board has liability regardless of whether they're a city employee or not, I mean, yes, as of today, you have that liability. Um and it rests, so but the chamber board is always, we we do carry our own DNO insurance, so. Um we have that rest as well, we have that liability as well.
I'm sure wherever we work out, there's gonna come up, there's gonna be.
I I believe I believe that that's the case, which is why I requested to be on the agenda. Um every meeting, whether the board president or somebody from the board, which. Obviously is why the rest of the entire chamber is still here, that they're all committed to making this work. Um continuing to operate and working with the city council, we're just trying to. Create some sort of separation, uh so that we can manage the staff member appropriately.
And so with wages and retirement and insurance and all that, it comes on to seventy-five thousand five hundred is the toll that. Would be with insurance, retirement, wages.
Cause that is Savannah, just staying on the city side is subject to the retirement, for instance, we have fabulous benefits passing.
We're not asking for remove any of that, Mary, we're asking for. Our own management oversight, so that we can reduce the situations that we've had in the past, that's what we're asking.
So the other uh clarification that somebody's gonna have to figure out is. Because I'm all for this Savannah, so I'm not trying to. But we have um been working for months on a new employee handbook and that's where. Where that is gonna be, you know, if it's a city employee.
They will not follow that handbook, they will abide by. They even, they will report to the chamber, they won't, they won't do any city duties, they would do chamber duties a hundred percent of the time.
That gives me serious concern.
Have you renewed their handbook?
That you have an employee who's not subject to the employee handbook. With no oversight or control.
Have you read, have you read the handbook?
I have read the handbook, yeah. So uh would your others?
It's a new one. That we're just bringing forward, so that's why it's kind of top of mind.
I'm not saying it's unworkable, because I I don't believe in absolutes like that to say, no, absolutely, this can't work. But it does raise, I think, a lot of issues.
So so if they, if they do go by the handbook and they are bound by the handbook, how do we keep, how do we move forward and keep? Everybody else out of the chambers business and the chamber directors business, that's the question, and let them function how they're how. The chamber needs to function without the continual issues that we've had in the past, that's what we're trying to prevent. We're trying to figure out how to get a director, how to get a director that is not having letters written about them.
Can can we uh can the chamber hire a a accounting firm to take care of the. Payroll and um health insurance and stuff like that? I mean, they're they're giving the money, can the chamber hi- hire an outside accounting firm to take care of payroll and healthcare and?
They possibly could, um being that's my line of work, I probably wouldn't recommend it. Uh I find that it would be very hard to find benefits um without going through the marketplace or going through. A separate entity and when you have one staff member, your rates are gonna be extraordinary. You're not gonna have retirement.
There's no way that we can if if they. To find a way to do the payroll and. Still haven't utilized our insurance, health insurance.
Well, yeah, I think there is a way to do it. Not unlike the way you have done it before, um to have someone on payroll and pay their. Their benefits and and stuff like that, but I think that that um is a a. A big factor in saying that that person is a city employee and then therefore they gotta be. Um subject to the city employee handbook and the council on on. Decisions, you know, whether they um. Disciplinary action, if it's warranted, uh oversight, that sort of thing, I. Again, I'm not saying it's unworkable, that you can't provide all those benefits and. And delegate all the responsibility to someone else, um but yeah, that that becomes a concern if you. If you cut the checks and make the payroll but have no recourse if something goes wrong.
Stan, you generally can't, um based on you, usually based on contracts with the vendor, whether that's. Whoever that carries the health insurance, life insurance, mental, a lot of times they won't let you just keep somebody else on that's not. A city employee, you can't generally contract that out based on um contracts that you have with your vendors. At minimum, if if we can't come up with a resolution for them not to be um. Bound by the city handbook, then I would request that um there's maybe a liaison on the city council that. The chamber president would correspond with. Uh versus having the org chart that was provided to the chamber a while back, all focused uh basically. Economic development, the chamber, um everybody went right back up to the mayor and I would request that then that's not the case, that it would. It would either be a liaison um. Without the mayor involved.
And I mean, I would say if you got two meetings a month, you got, you know, ample opportunity if something comes up to make us aware, meet with us.
And same with us too, if we have something that we could bring up then, at the end of our meeting, we could all go into executive session and both boards could talk it out.
I think I can speak on behalf of the chamber and anybody can feel pretty correct me if I'm wrong, I don't feel that we have an issue. Um recording, having this person report to the chambers and the chamber president or acting, whoever reports to the city council. Without the personnel committee, which includes the mayor.
I think you just include include the whole board. Just include the whole board, yeah, the city council then, yeah.
As long as I, as long as it's not being directed from other, as long as it's concerned by the actual council. And not being continually being developed elsewhere, because that would be my concern. I don't think that we have any issue with being transparent, I don't feel that we have any issue um leading. This with integrity and transparency, we don't have anything to, I, we've been trying to find a path forward for the last. Six months and haven't been able to come up with uh what that looks like, so this is. Um moving the, we thought that resolving this by removing the community center would solve it. Um it obviously did not and unfortunately, um we don't want a director. As well as president, so. Had I been here last uh meeting, I would have resigned as well, and you know, at least one, if not two, the people that would have resigned as well. We're trying to do what's right right by the chamber, we're trying to do what's right by the community, we feel that the chamber is important to the community. Um the community is important to us and the serves are looking for a path forward that we can stop. The continuance of the same situations over and over again, this has been happening for years. This has been happening way too long and we're trying to find a path forward, as I have stated to this council in executive session multiple times.
Well, and you know, with with our handbook, I'm sure if you guys saw an issue. Of liability or anything like that, that would be something that you would. Get in touch with us immediately on.
I can tell you, I've not seen your handbook, but your new handbook, um your previous handbook, um. There's a lot of things that weren't followed in that previous handbook, so I would have some serious concerns unless they've gone. Um back to an employment law attorney for review, I would have some serious concerns about.
Well, Rick, do you have any more thoughts on how?
Well, I I I I think. That if um. I can't agree with Nathan, I think it should be separate, there's gotta be a way that we can give the funding to the chamber, they can pay the director. And they can get him healthcare, now it might not be the state city healthcare and that that package, but I think the separation is really important. And it would just be cleaner and uh uh the 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 chamber will be in charge uh of their own budget. And uh I would think with with all their funding, that they will be able to come up with healthcare.
I think that how I I disagree with you, Rick, I think that the healthcare and having retirements and um. I I think it'd be very hard for us to find for one person.
Well, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you can match your retirement.
No, but any but any retirement, I mean, to have like at least this potential six percent match. Um something like that, I think it'd be very hard for us to to be able to do that, they just want an employee and have the funds to do it. And get health insurance separately or life insurance or any of the benefits, I think it'd be very hard pressed to do. And we do not wish to make that work, but.
And probably end up costing us more in the long run, because you'd be asking us more for more funds to cover your insurance and.
Because it's gonna be higher, I mean, anybody that uses it, anybody that's quoted health insurance anywhere at any time knows that. Uh the more people you have on the plan, Rick, you can probably test this, more people you have on the plan, usually it's about.
Well, and 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 in hiring. The health insurance. And benefit pa- packages really more important from the sound.
I would agree.
So you, yeah, you get, you have a point.
I think that's right on on target, um it's it's going to be more expensive, but that's. That's the drawback to cutting it loose and and letting the chamber run it.
I would like to see it completely cut loose, but. That means the city employee part seems to be the. Issue that I I just it just seems odd to you, I'm all for you guys running the heaven. The city completely out of it, but then you have city employees that we have no say or factors.
But it but it wouldn't not have any say, I just re- re.
We'd have to work, we'd have, they'd have to work that out, Savannah, because that's gonna take some discussion and a lot of bugs would have to get worked out. I'm sure you'll be up here arguing with us and they'll be back arguing with you before we get all the bugs worked out of it, but we are wanting to do it.
I am. You know, I I I agree, the chamber is extremely important, I support the chamber, but. I I do have a problem with. You want all the city benefits, but don't wanna follow any of the rules or answer to us, I just. No, I have a problem with that.
I just stated that we would be willing to report to the council and have a liaison to the council.
Yeah, where.
Can I just make a comment, this has only been ten days since this happened. We're trying to find a way and Savannah's said very well, we're trying to find a way forward. And right at this point, this is what we've come up with, it's. She just said it's not set in stone, if we can start at one place and then we can go on. Uh uh you know, ten days is very long to come up, we're still struggling trying to keep a board. So it's it's not. This isn't, no, this is the way we want it right now, no, we we're, this is a plan that we came up with. Obviously, you're not a hundred percent with it, fine, then let's go back to the drawing board and come up with a way. To compromise, we, well, needs the chamber. The chamber. Needs um finances from the board. Why we wanna go off by ourselves is so we don't have. Another person with the chamber. Somebody that really enjoyed her position.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna rehash, I'm not here to rehash all of the issues. Because otherwise it's gonna be like a midnight at the trap. Okay, I'm really good at this and I'm really good at debate, I'm really good at all of that, I'm not looking to do that. I'm trying to figure out a path forward for the chamber. That we don't have the continued issues that we've had, because we have these issues for a long time, a long time. And they send their their personnel issues, because when we're asking for the council's support. To try to figure out a path forward, we've been asking for it since August. I don't have us to ask, I mean, I feel like if we if we totally break up, we're never gonna be able to hire a director. I can tell you. I don't know who would come work, I mean, we're, we already have a hard time recruiting based on the challenges with the personnel situations. Who would wanna come work here, I mean, we're already gonna have a hard enough time recruiting, we're trying to figure out what that looks like. We have no issue answering to the council, we do have to, we feel strongly that we have to remove it, so it doesn't report directly to them. To the change of the mayor, the council, we don't have any issue reporting to the council.
So if we were to proceed and move forward. How how quickly do you think you could come up, I mean, with the employee handbook for the chamber and only the chamber position? How, what are you thinking, Savannah, you could maybe do with that, I mean, and it it could change, I understand that, but something that's. Workable for to get going and move forward, because I. It makes me very nervous if we can't have that conversation and secure those funds and and all of that stuff this evening, because it's.
We gotta do something to move forward today.
So is that something that the board would consider?
Annual enrollment for my own current profession, um and trying to hire a COO and a CFO, so. Uh my time is very, very limited. It depends on um, I I don't know, probably.
Well, can we just? Move forward with the city's handbook as it is now and then we we can work on that down the road.
You know, Dan, honestly, it's not even a fact that I have, well, I'm concerned about the old handbook, I've not read the the new handbook, so I don't know if it's been published out. To your city employees, I have no idea. I would be pleased to read that handbook and on behalf of board, if they so desire for me to read it to. See, I don't know that we have an issue necessarily with the, if if the city has a new handbook that's been reviewed by an employment law attorney. Who does that for a living, um that that's what, you know, everybody's being bound by, I don't think that we necessarily have an issue. That our chamber director would be bound by that, it's it's the reporting structure, it's ninety-nine percent the reporting structure. It's not the rules, it's not the handbook, it's not that.
But you can make that very clear to that individual who they are responsible to directly. And if it's something that needs to be brought to the attention of the council. And if it's something that needs to be brought to the attention of the council, either that individual, somebody from your board. I'd say the board. Make that happen.
The, the director reports to their board and then the board reports to the council.
But it, but what we can't have is the nitpickingness. We can't have that. That has to stop. We can't, if they still report to us because they were reporting to us for the last time long and then it still happened. There's letter written, all of these things that they didn't do, they didn't do, they didn't do. We need that to stop and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, if, if. The director of the chamber. Were, were reporting to the council. And then. The chamber director was paid through the city. Followed the handbook and put directly to the city council.
You know, but because I can't take it back, if they don't have the benefit package, they're not gonna be a liar. But I mean.
I would, I mean, I can tell you, I, it, it's what I do for a living. I can tell you that it's hard enough to recruit people when you have. An amazing package, let alone, I mean, how many people wanna move to wall? I mean, I like wall, but it's a little tough to get people to move to the wall.
And, and at the drugstore, we're, 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 we're in the same boat. We've still upped our benefit package over the last ten years.
You have to, right?
Have to, yeah. And, and, and you, but you can't expect the chamber to come up with that kind of package. For one per, I mean, yeah, I, I take back everything.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an. Unless there's something from the board that, you know, says it could not have anything different. I guess, I don't, we don't have an issue with. The chamber director following the rules and following publication. They have, they have the same expectations because, but. You know, we wanna be able to, you know, if, if the chamber director is coming in at eight fifteen because they've approved that with the board. I don't need the council bugging us, right? Because it's, we should be able to control what their work schedule is. What their hours are, they work different events, all those kinds of things, right? That's what we wanna be able, we wanna be able to deal with daily operational. You know, I mean, that's, it's not a rule issue. It's not a rule issue. I don't feel it is. I wouldn't expect anything from staff that report to me. There's still rules and rules. I have people. You know, I have to follow rules, just like everyone else. It's not, it's, we're not asking about.
We could just have a couple of consult kind of work. You guys. One of the next meeting and see if we can figure out and what attorney that figure out that it would solve the. Health insurance issues and payroll, which we can step for. The body aren't gonna solve it tonight.
Insurance benefits is the big issue, right, that we're discussing right now?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so your recommendation Stan is. Because actually Mike and Dan have been working on this with them. Am I, is that true? And. To me, you need to, do you have your job description rewritten?
No.
Is that something you could work on? And then that would, they'd be ready to post the job. Because if we don't get a job posted, that's just putting on that much longer, as far as getting someone hired. So.
We haven't updated the job description because we didn't know where it stands. So we have not. Today, we haven't updated the job.
I would suggest that you work on that and I agree with Stan, we've got to get, we're pretty fuzzy. On this, whether it's a city employee or not, because we're gonna end up giving them the W two, so.
Well, what, what, Mary, tell me what your issue is with giving them the W two. What is the issue about that? What, I don't understand.
That indicates it is a city employee and I was hopeful we would give it over and it would be a chamber.
But I'm asking the council for something different. I'm asking the council for something different. And I'm asking the council for them to be a city employee and not report up to you is what I'm asking.
I think that we're willing to do that.
I'm asking.
I think that's where that pays on from council.
And I would ask, you know, the rest of the board if they have any issues with having that happen.
I think it's all workable. I think it's gonna take a little bit of time. I mean. But do we, do we need to give them the authority tonight to?
Well, we need, I think that we would need to do the job description and. Start the process at least to be able to get somebody hired. Um, not a lot's happened in ten days. We can have a path forward. We have some plans. Our board has discussed some options. And we hope to be able to report because that's the only way that we're gonna keep the chamber running. We've got some events that are supposed to be happening. You know, we still have some stuff being worked on the backside. Of what we are planning and try to.
I would just say this discussion keep going until we work out the final detail of, of whether it's an employee or no employee, but go ahead and make a good description. You know, the city's going to give you funding because we just gotta work out one small major detail.
Really, nothing, nothing would change in the way the chambers funded. With Carolyn, I mean, if we turn the responsibilities over to their board, that's not gonna change the funding or anything, is it? So that's, that's nothing that really has to be.
Dollars are all there.
Done to.
But they do need to turn in the receipts.
We just need to give you guys the authority to. Hire, write the job description. And, and they, and manage that position and then we can work out the rest of the details. Because like, we gotta get to. Moving on this.
I.
If you're rewriting the, the handbook, because this would be the perfect time to put a clause in for the chamber director. If it needs to be a little different. I mean, you're rewriting it anyway, so why can't you set a clause in for the chamber, chamber position? If it needs to be different. I don't, I guess I don't see why it does need to be different. If it did, wouldn't this be the perfect time to do it?
If you don't want the chamber director to report to the mayor, and I do think you need a, a separate clause in the handbook that outlines. Should who to answer to.
Responsible of the board.
Yeah.
See that member's handbook and you guys do a handbook and like in the clause, see chamber handbook?
Yeah, just one separate thing that said. Specifies how the chamber director is.
It's already listed, yeah. It's already listed in our laws. I don't know.
It could be listed in the city handbook.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I think, and I think if you're gonna restructure that different than other employees, it needs to be carved out specifically. Because you all have no control over the chamber bylaws.
Yeah, exactly. It should be in, in the city handbook. I agree. And that would, do we have clarity?
So that it could be portion of the handbook that apply to.
Yeah. And I think all of these details are, and they're valuable. You can change. Until you hit the button hire on the employee. So I think you all can kind of generally. Rule the request, get the hiring process started, um, get the provisions in the, uh, ha- employee handbook rewritten. All that done and. Work out the details up until the time when chamber comes before you and says you wanna hire. Kinggo, Johngo, whatever. And you'll, at that point, you'll have to have it pretty well established, but.
But we, we need to make sure that it's established now in regards to benefits, because I can't, I can't advertise for a position of knowing that those benefits aren't.
And I think you all can, you all can make that decision tonight and say, if you want to have them advertised for benefits, you can.
I wanna make that motion just as Nathan spelled it out. Something going in the handbook that he's satisfied with and we should move forward because. You know, we're. We're kind of treading water here and, and the chamber is hugely important to us and, you know, awesome.
Rick, it's moved Stan seconded. Any other discussion?
So you will keep in close contact with us, Dan and myself and then, okay. And then, you know, there might be times honestly with a lot of detail of stuff that I would actually prefer you guys come. Or a representative, um, you know, because sometimes that's hard to pass on remembering stuff, things change. So, um, just having your presence probably.
That, that was one of the things that we hope to solve with having the standing spot, so I don't have to try to remember every single time to get on the agenda.
Sure.
Is so that we could give whatever report the city council needed. Um, and I think that that would solve that issue is to have. Open communication and transparency with the council. I mean, if, if the person is going to be. Provided funding by the city and benefits and such, I feel like it's super important for if the chamber board to have some responsibility. In reporting that information, um, and anything being brought forward or taken up or any issues or whatever. That the council sees fit, then the chamber board will answer to that.
Yeah, I think the two meetings, uh, a month are gonna be pretty beneficial in these months moving forward.
We just need to be able to manage our staff member appropriately. And request that they do that for long.
And when Carolyn indicates that she needs time sheets by such and such a time to write checks for, for payroll.
But I would also request that, um, from my understanding, uh, some of the mid-buns draws have been late and my, my request would be is that they're paid on time. There was time where you weren't able to sign because you weren't in the office, uh, et cetera, and. Checks have to be presented to the employee on the date that it's agreed on. So I would request that.
And sometimes huge effort was made to get checks to the employee on time and no one's known that.
I, I, I realize that period, but the law requires that you pay on the day that it. Agreed upon, which if it's listed in your handbook that you have to pay on the fifteenth of the month, that doesn't mean the sixteenth of the month, the seventeenth of the month has to be paid on the fifteenth of the month or before.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? Did you go on this?
No, maybe you should.
Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Thank you, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public comments. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns. No action can be taken and it's a three minute time limit. Do we have anyone with any comments? Seeing none?
I would act, act the new.
Oh, wow.
I just, on your ordinance.
Would you like to come to the?
If you'd like me to.
Yes, I would.
Um, just reading through one fifty-five. It seems to me some of those items are very subjective, I guess. Yeah, I'm just curious like who would be the one in charge of deciding. For example, what. Or the whole propaganda is.
Um, is this in?
Should, should we wait till we get to that item, which isn't very far away?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was.
We, we have an ambulance report and then boom, we're on the.
We can.
Does that make sense? Benny, well, you are longer than three minutes too.
Oh, why don't you?
Okay, thanks, Rick. Okay, any other? Okay, ambulance report.
Okay, so, um, yeah, our calls just don't feel good this year. It seems like everything's going down. Remember the calls. Uh, so we have the month of September, we had about fifteen calls and, uh, we only had eight transports. So that's not that much. I did see you guys have the budget begins on the agenda. I know we had a request for budget, so I just wanted to give an update. Uh, we filed with the county for the next year for the assessment. And it looks like we're gonna get about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. I don't know if it is. It sounds like it's even less than last year.
It wasn't.
It just, yeah, keep hoping all this building is gonna bring us more money, but it doesn't seem like it. Um, another comment I'm gonna make here is, uh, for this year, we had budgeted, we were expecting about one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars from our tax district. And we only received a hundred sixty seven. Yep, so, um, we're probably not gonna get. Any before the end of the year. Uh, time is pretty much over. So that's something to keep in mind. Yes, we budgeted this amount because that's what we expect to receive, but. Uh, in reality, it's less. Anyway, um, we doing very well. Uh, we trying to keep our budget under control. It's been working very well so far, including our payroll. Um, but. Once again, we appreciate your help, guys, um, putting our influence and. Yeah, that's all I have unless you have any questions. Good. Okay, thank you.
Completely.
Okay, so that does bring us to the first reading of the budget ordinance. And that was in your packet.
I did have a question on the expenditures. I add up, it doesn't mean, it doesn't add up to the total expenditures. Down on that first line.
That's because of fund balance. Can't, can't record the fund balance because that's just money that's sitting up here. It's not on the revenue side.
No, on the general fund side or on the.
It doesn't match the revenue side or what doesn't match.
Uh, the. Sorry, we're what this, it's, um. Thing is the C forty-one cell, so it's. Sorry. So on this expenditures here. Starting from the top here, going down. And like these two, where are they? The fire department, the library, they're not over on these C cells, so they wouldn't be added into the.
They are, those two amounts equal that amount.
Equal that amount, okay. So, and then with those two, or say. You can say. So I come up with three million five hundred twenty thousand and then three forty-eight. Because. So I copy and paste of this and it's like C nine through C forty, which we go to here. And, um, it was like minus thirty-two thousand, like this.
And that's.
Is that a course?
Yeah, that's due to the golf course, um. And it's a funding. It, it's not gonna match up. It's gonna show that.
Okay.
Because that's, that, there gets to be a transfer from the golf course, the water fund and of that.
Okay.
Because that money doesn't actually go out to, it's just actually a transfer between. Do you have others?
We put more into the baseball thing?
That was the request.
The base, they did. Um, committee or whatever they requested, that was twenty-five hundred. Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Do you have any comments, Dan and Rick, here that?
Like, I would just comment that Rick and I and Mary and Carolyn. Last week, for about an hour and a half, we went through everything and so. I think everything is. That, I knew the motion that we, that was the first reading.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so it's been moved by Stan, seconded by Rick. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Means and cares. Okay, that now brings us to item number fifteen, which is the first reading of the ordinance twenty-five oh-two. And this was, um. The. Um, ordinances that the planning and zoning met on. And approved or is recommending to the city council. Uh, Carolyn, as zoning administrator, do you have any other comments or? Uh, Lily was the presiding officer at that zoning meeting?
Well, I would just comment, there was a suggestive revision to the noise ordinance.
Well, I would just comment, there was a suggested revision to the noise ordinance. But um that whole ordinance really needs to be reviewed and. There was just some question on what the revision really would end up doing, so. That will be looked at another time when they've had time to review that total ordinance on the noise pollution and. Come with any recommendations of that, so there'll have to be another one sent over that, okay?
What is so now we approve these? Uh, now call separately.
No, it's one total ordinance read that gives you. The change in just one whole listing.
What if you don't want, wants?
You can make a motion to approve whatever portion of that, with the exception of whatever chapter revision you wanna make. If you. If that's what you choose, then all the council would have to agree to that.
Well, that's kind of real confusing because it's kind of kind of has to tell. What can do is what to old unless you have the. It would be nice if it was kind of. Line out what was taken out and underlying what was taken in and hope that added.
That's not how the ordinance actually reads, that the working committee had that option of showing that, but the planning and zoning. But their suggestion, and they did make some changes as to what was proposed um at that meeting, they made some changes to it. And so the process is that they bring this, these suggested changes to the full council.
They like the very first one, the uh chapter thirty point oh four, the planning and zoning recommended that.
I mean, there was a change, yeah, with the, are you talking the Robert's rules of or states?
The other part that was added, the planning and zoning act where you do that.
Yeah, uh there was discussion on it and some changes made with what the first proposal was that gave to them.
Because they were given that part where what the old was, what was the new, then they. Discussed it in length and this is what they recommended then.
The first, the first ordinance that I think you're referring to, um. There was discussion at the conference of, cause that part says that, it said that we would uh follow the Robert's Rules of Order, which is. Really difficult um because it's a very lengthy document and.
Well, I'm not talking about that, I was just talking about the two sentences that follows the symptom for the old. Add in there. So although the city is a small and informal board, it must be maintained through its whole life.
And that is how our our current ordinance reads. That is how our current ordinance reads. There was no change to it.
I thought it looked on the online and that was all, that was not it.
We need to look again, I guess. Now, could you please say which ordinance you refer to here?
I'm afraid to. Be at the very, sorry, on this, we chat just ten thirty.
What was changes that if we take, move away from uh Robert's rules? Because most people don't know that.
Okay, I apologize, I, you are right, that part was taken from another municipality, that that's how they wrote theirs. We don't have to include that, I mean.
Well, if if there are any problem changing around through the vote. The vote, rule of order to the South Coast law, but I assume South Coast law would. Would include what's in those next two sentences, so I think we should start from there.
I agree.
And go back with just stopping it.
So then the only thing you change is. Part means.
Stop at this sentence that says when, um.
Stop at the sentence where it says South Coast state law. Period, and then start up again at the bottom where it says no vote of the city council.
Okay.
Let that all that part just scrub out.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, if you guys wanna make these changes to those things, you can all agree to it, if any of the changes you wanna make and then. Move forward with the first reading.
Comes back on the second reading then, is approved of that. So is that what you're indicating, would we need a motion?
Why can't we just approve what always changes chapter thirty point oh four?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about right now is to.
Okay.
And then it would come back in the second re- reading at the next meeting without that.
Okay.
So, okay.
So we need, I've made that motion for chapter thirty point oh four.
Okay.
Change Robert's rule of orders, substitute, drop Robert's rule of order and replaces the South Coast state law.
So read, okay, but actually what you're trying to do is remove that next two sentences.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so Stan is moved to remove from thirty point oh four. Um, although our city is small and informal, I'll burst to the end of attendance at any meeting. That will be stricken, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, okay, that'll come back first, second reading, okay?
That was your seventy-four, right?
Yep, that part.
Cause I think we had something up in.
Yeah, right. Is this, is this where you're coming?
Um, yeah, just reading through it, I guess, it does seem a little, even like number one where it says two fully dressed mannequins. It seems that the frontage of our main street varies depending on the business. And so like, in fairness to say, while drug, they have much more frontage. I would think it would make more sense to have profite mannequins, but I don't, I'm not saying I even implore that, but it just. It seems like it's, and then fully dressed mannequins, I guess, it seems discretionary. Depending on who you ask, in today's world, what that means. So I I just, who's who's policing this, I guess?
Well, that's a great question, cause I I think that the whole thing is crazy.
And then it's like the, you know, what is an, what's an unpleasant sign in today's world, I guess? And that's very subjective and I'm, I think both of us probably would agree on what that is, but. I guess it it does become subjective and so I just, I personally feel like it's, it opens up a can of worms in a lot of different areas that. We might not foresee and could potentially lead to things that are unworn, unwanted, I guess. In the best interest of our main street as, I would say, very clean and tidy and it looks nice and. I guess I just don't wanna jeopardize that potentially by doing something that we don't foresee based on the way this reads, I guess, so. That's all I have.
So you're opposed to number one?
Uh, I guess just entirety, I don't, I just, I think it, it needs to be very clear if we're gonna pass these, in my opinion, and I think. Much the way that it's written, very subjective to opinion. So if there's a way to do it where it's black and white instead of very gray perhaps, but. I guess that's up to you guys to decide, I think the way it's written would be potentially opening up stuff that we can't perceive in the long.
I I think our present ordinance. Is very effective and we should keep it. I think this muddies the water. It's not helpful, it's gonna be hard to police like. This thing where you can display T-shirts on the doors. Or you can put mesh wire on the building and hang T-shirts all over, I mean, how could that go wrong?
Yeah.
I'm being sarcastic. I I mean, what we have now is good, it 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 keeps uh well. It's Main Street aesthetically pleasing, fair to everybody, and uh I don't think we really wanna look like a flea market.
I think it also should be noted deadly, they used to allow it and both that carried away and. And back then they, they did two and a half, and particularly three, and so they, as of October sixth, they just. Put it all, and they're the same as what we are.
They don't allow uh T-shirts hung outside the building at all.
Because it's hard to police, who is, who's gonna place it, care, I suppose. Joe, nothing, yeah, no. But who would police it, well, we aren't gonna have a policeman, aren't gonna wanna police that. And if you, if you do, it says in there you could take a hundred dollar fine, well, what is? That was a problem in Deadwood, people wouldn't pay the fine, so what do you do then?
Nathan, if if we had an ordinance such as this and we we approved it to move forward and and something happened. Somebody ran into it, poked an eye or went down, broken arm, or do we assume sort, some sort of liability? Because we approved this ordinance, I know it's their responsibility with that, but. It's still something that.
No, I I don't think for something like that, an injury, I I don't see how that might extend liability to to the city, um.
I mean, but what with what we have right now, that it's not allowed, if if the same thing happened, we are in the clear one hundred percent. Because we have an ordinance that says no, correct?
Not sure I understand the question.
Um, what we have right now, if something were to happen.
Mannequins, no T-shirts.
We don't allow it.
Yeah.
If something were to happen, we're fine.
So the, there's a lot that's packed into that, generally with your ordinances. Um, they are enforced on a complaint-based system. Um, if somebody complained about a business fifty times and you never did anything about it and they were clearly in violation of ordinance. Then you might run into trouble, but if um if somebody violated, had a mannequin sitting out or whatever, and nobody ever complained. Never came up that there was an ordinance violation, um and you didn't do anything about it, you have, you have no duty to enforce. To proactively enforce an ordinance for any specific individual, okay, you don't hold a duty to. Jim Jones walking down the street who trips over a mannequin, unless you selectively enforce, right, so. Um, does that answer your question?
Kind of, I just feel like we're more protected right now than if we try, I mean, we currently have a policy in regards to that. And there are rules that weren't followed, so then we're asked to look at it and and open it up. I just have a difficult time expanding on something that's not currently being followed, does that make sense? It's more.
That's a new ordinance that that's one, one of their concerns is liability. If you didn't follow the rules and that thing wasn't caught, you know, it was just so involved.
Right, but now you're saying like if somebody walks by, trips, they have a mannequin out there, not supposed to be there, they trip. They can't come after the city because it's on their ordinance. Well, and I believe if we have an ordinance that says what the requirement is, it is our responsibility. To make sure that that requirement is followed, because then if something happens, you know, we could, then we can say, well, with this individual's been warned. Three times, this is, you know what I'm saying, I just feel like. I don't know.
Yeah, I I just think the liability questions are too fact-based, depends on the circumstances. I think that the, the, you've got a bigger issue, the more strict um your ordinances are. And especially if they um restrict free speech, that sort of thing, then you might run into, not necessarily liability for an injury. But issues with enforcement and um and the validity of your ordinance. So you wanna be careful about telling people what they can and cannot say or advertise or.
And that's, that's kind of where I have an issue is, is if we're gonna have guidelines, but we're not gonna enforce those guidelines, why consider it? You know what I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me if we are, if we're not gonna enforce what we do. And wait for something to happen to say, well, that person wasn't warned, so we're not gonna, you know what I mean?
I'd like to ask the question Mr. Kersman was going to, what is political propaganda? What is it to you versus what is it to me versus what is it to Lily? I mean, I'll go with.
The days are by and yeah.
I do think that a lot of these, the terms in this, in your ordinance, uh as amended, in your current ordinances, in every city code. Are gonna be subject to interpretation, the, I mean, what is waste, what is something that's unsafe? All those things are gonna have a different definition for um for a lot of people, but when you're talking about limiting speech. You, your ordinance needs to be, um, it needs to be very strictly related to a compelling. Government purpose or a reason that you're doing that, you can, for example, you can prohibit pornography. In the shop windows, okay, there's, you you can restrict free speech that way, and the courts have said. Yeah, it's hard to define pornography, but I know it when I see it, right, um. But so that, I think you can kind of extend that to political propaganda as well. Um, I think it's fair for you to say you can't have T-shirts that incite violence. Or, you know, call for uh, you know, uh insurrection or violence or whatever.
Well, vulgar, the vulgar language part, are we okay to do that, like?
Yeah, I think that, again, you do run into the issue of how do you define that, what's vulgar and what's not, but. But you can, if you have a a a compelling purpose to to say you can't. Put those things in your shop window, if there's a a good reason, like. Then, then you can, but yeah, you gotta be careful about prohibiting things that you can't really define or can't pick out.
Molly, would you like to make?
The question has come up, who places it, well, who places it now? We have work now, who's, who's doing it now?
Well, we've had a little problem this, this summer and we just, it's pretty easy to place now, but we can just say. We can't have it there, so you gotta take it down.
Who, who does that? Like, a mayor?
That came in.
Does it that day?
Well, it wasn't me.
Well, that came in through a a community member complaint, yes?
It was a, a store, and that's why the sidewalk committee was formed. And discussed and this, so all of these recommendations came out of that. Sidewalk committee meeting, so.
Well, I'm not sure the committee did he recommend it.
So, what I'm saying is, it's really, like, he's asking two places, it's, it's the same as we do now, basically.
So it's, if someone claims to someone and then it comes to the city council.
Right.
It's not really police all the time, if there's a complaint, then they end up, the committees. Actually go and investigate the complaint.
That day?
Pretty much, I know Mike and Rick and I don't remember who, there was a complaint that they said, you know, we've gotta come. And deal with this. It was another issue. Now, so that, I I assumed that's the way it was, you got ordinance, if there's a complaint, there's a problem. If there's no complaint, there's no problem.
And 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 I, I think our present ordinance is good ordinance, it emphasized safety, it keeps our sidewalks. Clear. From merchandise and the sidewalks.
From merchandise and the sidewalks, the city's in charge of the sidewalks. I mean, the businesses have to. Maintain them, change the cement or wha- whatever, but the city controls the the sidewalks. And I think think the top thing should be the the safety. We've got a lot of uh people down here in the summer, they should be able to move freely without tripping over stuff.
So one of these items on this ordinance pertains to benches and it allows benches. For seating on the sidewalks. Are we saying that we do not want benches?
Well, I I think we'd allow benches anyway. I mean, we've been we've had benches for thirty years or forty years from the drugstore and I know there's other benches.
So if we have new work benches, is that gonna be an issue?
So we go until there's a complaint turned in, I mean, we got benches in front of our.
But what if someone complained about it?
Yeah, see. Um I.
We need benches, but what if someone complained about it?
Well, nobody has to this point.
I wanna know if Lily, do you have anything to speak on with the community part of it or no?
Community, we just looked at the safety during the biggest thing with eighty eight La Cuenca. Uh we're doing this um and I'm gonna go back to who's president, we had this. Store down there, they had everything for years, nobody complained about it, they violated the ordinance apparently. Until somebody new showed up in town and went a little viral about stuff. And now we've made everybody else take everything out, so we've been doing it before and it was fine, maybe not to this extent. I'm gonna be sexist, but I'm sorry, if I'm gonna own the store on Main Street. I'm not gonna allow any of you guys to decorate it from you, I'm sorry, your mail. So I don't think you can really put too much into it. I'm sorry if I'm gonna offend you, but.
So seriously, I'm asking that question if more benches are added or uh floral. I guess they just do it and then and if somebody complains and we have to take them away or.
So and I think it alludes a lot to what she just said as far as like, there was ordinances that weren't being perfectly followed, but it didn't like cross the line of. Being obtrusive and so I think the benches are kind of like maybe. That gray area where it's like they're not causing a problem and if all of a sudden we have thirty benches and they become a problem, then. That's the time to address it, I think, because somebody will bring it to you as an issue, the same way that this. Other store was brought as an issue, to my understanding. I mean, I don't know, I it doesn't have to be like spelled out if it's not a problem in my opinion. That's maybe not the legal way to look at it, but until it becomes an issue, it's fine, I guess.
What if someone wants a bench, they just come to the city council and get your approval for the bench in front of their store?
Well, I'm just saying that we've got person pretty fired up about bringing in some really nice benches. Those benches are being um. Donated as memorials. And.
Aren't the benches already in the city ordinance though? They weren't those, we talked about, they weren't.
I don't believe they are.
No.
What? I thought they were.
I'm pretty sure that years ago, like when I first started, we would go around and there was benches that were built by the FFA.
Yes.
And they were all along on Main Street and we'd go pick them up in the winter time and.
Wouldn't we put the store, like you said, I've been there with a bunch of them and then they didn't get brought back for some reason, so I I don't know who we even talk.
Yeah, Danny Danny was the one.
And I guess they have to take it back, so.
We need benches for sure, I mean, we do.
Benches are nice.
Yeah.
For husbands.
Seriously, that is.
Well, I would I do think we did leave the ordinance like it is. But you know that we are not opposed to benches. Down there real issue and there are thirty of them, maybe deal with it.
So I have a question for you, so what if the business decides to put stuff outside like they did before? What if business decides to put like T-shirts on the door like they did before, even those ordinance, you know? Not allow you to do it, then what we're gonna do, is we're gonna treat it the same benches?
Well, no, tha- that's merchandise and we have an ordinance against that.
Well, what if those businesses are gonna come and complain about benches?
Well, then we won't give them one. No bench for them. Well. I don't know, you know, if 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 people, if the citizens of Wall are. Really opposed to having benches downtown, which we've had forever, by the way. Yeah, then I suppose the city council can decide what they wanna do.
But my point is the business is gonna decide what they're gonna do, what are we gonna do about it?
Nobody complains then?
Nobody complains about it, which is gonna treat it as a bench?
Just treat it, yeah.
Well, I I think you're wrong if there's if people start doing that, people will complain. If people put benches up, nobody's gonna complain.
But I'm, nobody complained for a couple of years about one business, that's what I'm trying to say. They're gonna do it right now, maybe nobody's gonna complain. We're not policing it right now, right? There is not gonna go and check every single store, we're getting back to the council.
And I think there were issues prior to that business going in, there's another business in town that. I know the council has had a lot of conversation and to no avail. Not even a response.
Like racks and clothes or something on the side of?
Yeah, that was stupid, because you know, it's regularly and and they were talking, they we saw like.
Yeah.
So with the ordinance that we've had forever, could anyone ever come in and say for one day? Can I put a sandwich board out in front of the bank because we're having a meals? Um I mean, a meals benefit, because I know that we were asked to take that sandwich board down, we could not display it. And so we had it out there for one year for about an hour and we were asked to remove it, so we never put it out again. But if you're gonna have an ordinance, can somebody come in and say for one day between the hours of ten AM and two PM, can we have a sandwich board on our sidewalk? It's just something to consider. Like conditional use type thing.
Well, we used to do that with the. Well, maybe we still do banners during the rally or.
It was on the sidewalk though.
Come to the council, it was. But I think we knew with conditional use, you're meant for that as well.
The only thing I would comment on that is. Is people need to think ahead enough time in order to get to a council meeting and pass for that permission. It just doesn't happen, you don't think about it, so then when they come the day after a council meeting. And want that and it's gonna happen before the two weeks again, how do we address that? It's kind of just, I mean, you know, and I see what you're saying, but it's just, I don't know that it's gonna follow like you think it should.
So the purpose of this this whole section was to try to give guidance. And allow some of the things that have been happening before to happen. What am I hearing now? Those businesses that so politely agreed when. I reached out to them with the letter and said, I'm gonna talk about this, we're gonna build an ordinance, we're gonna uh have guidelines. So it's gonna be okay if they just go back to doing what they were doing.
Well, I'm still in favor of changing our ordinance to let businesses kind of. Abide by this and still be able to draw in um customers that come in, cause I know. Some businesses want to have some of their merchandise outside to draw those people inside and not just have them keep walking by. Um I think like, you know, it's brought up by Ryan, the fully dressed mannequins, maybe we just change that to mannequins. And not fully dressed mannequins, just straight mannequins and like.
They don't have to be dressed.
That's kind of why fully dressed.
Why fully dressed was in there?
Usually a person's putting out a mannequin, so they can advertise them, so there's the word. I mean, that's that's common sense.
And I I think a real real issue, I mean, and and you know, just from where I feel. About it is we have some businesses in town that are really good at following rules. And when you do talk to them, they're very responsive, they try to stay in those perimeters. Unfortunately, we have some that look at those and when they look at them, they try to stretch them. And it it ruins a lot for everybody and so, I mean, that's genuinely how I feel. I mean, I would like to have a little bit of compromise, but like I said, when when you got somebody who's. Not currently following the rules, asking you to look at something to expand on what they're what they're doing. It's it's that's different than somebody that's staying in the lines and says, hey, can we take a look at this? You know, that's the frustrating part for me, um and unfortunately. The businesses that are responsive and good with it. They're having to pay some of the price for that and it's unfortunate and I understand that.
I'm gonna make a comment about businesses because. Um first of all, when you have a new business on top, I'm sorry Mike, but they have no idea what they see or they have no idea what they're supposed to do with that. That they can or can't can or cannot, so I don't know whose responsibility it is, so I wouldn't just say they do not follow the rules. They just don't even know the rules to start with, how many how many of you guys knew the rules before you started your business, to be honest? If you come to the city and you ask what is your ordinance look like, you know, so I'm pretty sure I just wouldn't call it like they don't follow the rules. Especially when we have new people in town, they just don't know the rules.
And.
When you ha- when they know the rules.
But if you don't know the rules, you don't just do what you wanna do until you're told to take it down or that you're not following the rules. I think you do your due diligence and you check that out.
That's what I just wouldn't just say, their own fault, I think, I'm sorry, but it's our fault as well. That we're not really transparent in telling those businesses what they can and not do.
That's what's out there, I feel like I've worked, this is like what I did with the five and six year olds. And I'm not talking you, I'm just saying as the ordinance is, rules are rules. We teach children, there are rules and this is what happens, and I'm gonna use a different example. I have students in a classroom and if I have Ryan who's sitting there chomping on gum and the school rule says no gum. But Lily's here chewing her gum very quietly and I've got Matthew who said, oh, but Ryan's chewing gum, how come he can't chew gum? So I tell Ryan to get rid of his gum, but Lily's chewing hers nicely, so I don't make Lily. The rule is the same for all, so if there is no gum chewing in the classroom or the school, there is no gum. Whether they are chomping their gum or they're chewing it nicely, there's none. So if you have a rule, the rule needs to be followed by all, cause that's what we're teaching our children, there are rules. And the rules need to be followed by all, otherwise why are we having an ordinance? And that's what I see and I use to try to keep things in my classroom, so it's fair for everyone and it's not a. I'm picking on Ryan or I'm picking on Lily because Lily's my friend, so I'm not gonna get her to go friends with her mom, so Lily can chew gum. But you know, Ryan, I'm gonna chew on Ryan because you know, he can't have a gum. I mean, we can't have favoritism, I mean, there's, and I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying that's. What I try to run my classroom and the school that that is the rule, that is rule for all.
And so that was the whole purpose of this is to set down some rules that everybody could live with. And it came through a committee process, went to a reading committee. Um I see some businesses doing some really fun things that are inviting in their. Inviting for their businesses and it's gonna be very disappointing if we're actually trying to say, nope, nothing.
You know, I think this is poorly written, we should not do it, our present ordinance is good. I think, you know, some of the businesses we're trying to placate, we had other rules that we talked to them about. As far as noise, talk to them, talk to them, talk to them, send them letters, they never complied. And 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 I think that. This is not a good change, it's gonna open things up, it's not well-written. And uh I I think we should have a level leveled playing field downtown, it should be fair for everybody.
Once those businesses found out what their, that that wasn't allowed in the ordinance, so they complied once they knew that came.
They didn't they didn't honor the noise.
The, oh, you're talking coming out there, you know, may- maybe they miss oversaw that, I don't know, but I know like with their. Cell walk or sidewalk sales, they did comply once they found out through this.
Yeah, the new business.
The new one?
But the one like, the one doesn't even. Take the snow off the sidewalk, they don't do snow. Yeah, did do they not remove snow in the weather? Usually, I see people from the community coming down and they're not a sidewalk in front of somebody. Right, yeah, they were the ones that, because the other guys were good and as soon as they were asked, they they no problem, you know, but. We went through this a few years ago with a business. And when you say they wanna, with our ordinance was, you couldn't hang nothing outside, well, the insurance man said, fine. I'll just mount it to my inside wall, it'll be on hinges and I'll swing them outside, not what are you gonna do about it? Always has somebody, it's gonna push the rule. And I I I always leaning towards some stuff out on the sidewalk, but. We don't always have people breaking the rules and maybe it should just be a flat rule that there ain't nothing out there, put the benches and and live by it. That's what I think.
I agree.
I'd like to be able to see them people do it, somebody always just gotta push it, always just gotta push it.
But that's why we're setting up this ordinance is to try and.
Give them guidance.
Give them guidance and not. But do you think that that will be followed with? Having it laid out the way that it is, Jerry just gave you an example with the swinging out of the the deals. Do you think that that will solve all of the issues and that it'll be complied with? I I I know there's a good handful of businesses even present in here today that would be very good about following it. Those are my concerns.
Well, it was the Main Street businesses that sat down and. Put these together, helped guide the planning and zoning and and agreed to these these directives of and they were. Willing to follow them, but they just wanted to be able to do some advertising.
Not all the businesses agreed to these categories. There was really only two.
I I would make a motion, I would make a motion that this sidewalk ordinance, we do not pass it.
Okay, it's been moved that one fifty point two five. Be not approved.
Not approved, is that right?
And Mike seconded? Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Oh. You opposed it, Zach?
Yeah.
Does that require real um roll call vote then?
Yes.
Okay. Stan, or are you you'll call it?
Stan?
Oh, yes, hi.
Um Morgan?
Hi.
Stan?
Hi.
Um Pop?
Hi.
Mike Anderson?
Hi.
Bobbin?
Nate.
Most in cares? So then the last one is one fifty one point oh two five and that is. Regarding the food set.
Should we switch that to Fifth Avenue instead of Fourth with celebration?
Celebrating and hires that is offended.
Has offended?
And that's not really on the main street, they're often parking.
Okay, yeah.
Well, that was that.
Oh, I was just concerned if the celebration um got a food truck, if it.
Oh, I was just concerned if the celebration, um, got a food truck, if it'd be allowed here, but it'd be allowed under this ordinance, so.
And that's not a constant. I mean, it's just, um. It's no different than, than getting the noise permit for their bands type thing.
Thank you.
So what is, what is item seventeen, what's that? So that says food trucks.
That's in addition to the commercial zoning ordinance. We only have sixteen items listed in the commercial zoning that will be permitted. And, um, so I'm just adding line seventeen in there to allow food trucks. Because there's been question about it, and when we redid our new zoning ordinance. That was overlooked because it wasn't included in our old ordinance. Um, but any food trucks that were in place. With the old ordinance are grandfathered in.
Like that's.
Like Zach's, yeah.
So you don't have to do a commission?
No.
Correct.
Correct.
But that has nothing to do with, with this?
No.
So then, so.
So if somebody wanted to come back into Scott's lot down there on the corner.
Yeah.
We approve this thing.
They would be facing South Boulevard. They can't face, um, Main Street.
So when you say Main Street between. Or, or that they, they can't have food truck between Main Street or that avenue and.
Well, they, they would be passed, they would be passed. Carolyn, who is the board of adjustments in this?
Can read it to him, I guess.
A conditional use of the board of adjustments, subject to such requirements may permit the following use. It's good additional. Who's the board of adjustments?
You guys are.
We are, okay.
Hey, any other discussion on this?
On that motion to second.
Okay, Zach is moved. Dan is seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So with that being said, uh, thirty point oh four will go to second reading. And then the fifty one oh two five. Okay.
Oh, thirty oh four as amended.
Yes.
Say that again.
Thirty oh four as amended.
As amended.
Then what about the one fifty point two one? Was that the one that got added as well? The obstructions or was that already?
Oh, so the only change in that ordinance was the first six words it says has allowed in. Whatever, how does it say that? As provided, did it say that?
It says best provided in fifteen point two five.
So the fifteen point two five has been where.
And that's been.
So the, those two will just go back to what, what's originally there, right?
Well, that you kind of skipped over the one fifty point two.
Yeah, point two one is the obstruction.
To review that and, um.
Take out that.
Either remove that first. Six.
Yep.
Things, that's what you.
Then remove what?
Provided in state codified law.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so Stan is moved.
So actually, then you're just striking.
Yeah.
Right? Oh, oh, I see, yeah, it cleans it up.
Yeah, I mean, it just.
Because it doesn't exist.
You're not gonna allow that change, so it's just gonna stay as it currently is.
Gotcha.
But a motion to keep that as is.
I got Stan on the, motion on, on the second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Close, motion carries. All right. Item number sixteen, access easement from five forty four. That was in your packet.
So, um, I had mentioned this at the last meeting that, um, there was a. Someone looking to purchase this and they wanted. Approval to access of a city property, which is the transfer station down to that building to the west of there. And so I asked the engineer to review that to, to either draw up an easement or to look into it. He provided this information to me and he feels that, that easement is allowed and has been for years, so. There's no action that needs to be taken, but I just put it on there as an update for you to understand.
Okay, no action.
Quick question, Garrett, did that all look like it lines up pretty close with?
When I saw the property lines farther to the east. But yeah, no, it adds up. So, oh, where is our property line is just about. It's just on the other side of that, right there is that. So this is our property and then this enclosed area is theirs.
Oh, and the car doors here.
Yeah, yeah, so there was just no way, there's no way they could access their.
So we're just doing an easement?
Yeah, yeah, perfect. All right.
Right? Ensure renewal.
So every year they do the open enrollment, um, to be held for the calendar year of twenty. Or whatever next year, if it's twenty twenty six, and so I included what our current rates are. Um, of the three current plans that we have, because we don't have an employee, we just want, um, any employee on that plan. So we just have the employee only, employee plus children and the family, and so I'm just showing you that increase. And if you read that letter, it's like a fourteen point nine percent increase. So either need approval to, uh, move forward and accept that increase. Or we need to look at something else if you don't wanna. Approve that, that rate increase.
Does anyone on the council have an opinion? What she should do?
So fourteen point nine percent increase, Carolyn, do, do we know what the industry average increase is from, from anybody?
I guess like. Average is about eighteen percent.
Eighteen?
Is the national average.
National average for what?
Does anyone want to make a motion to move forward?
So move.
Stan's moved. And Jerry seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Close, motion carries. Okay.
Henry, I have something that I'd add on my report. I've never been high on leaving a cabinet. Is that acceptable? Yeah. Sorry about that. Um, so things, um, that I do not have capacity to, uh. Do all of the chamber duties. I would request from the council that we could potentially hire a part-time, uh, staff member, uh, to help us get by. And if we get somebody.
That'd be funny.
Yeah, they'll help us get, uh, keep some of the activities that we have going and, um, all our bills paid and that kind of stuff. And then obviously still, uh, oversight by the chamber and then.
So I guess I would need to ask at what rate we're posing the same rate with the.
No, I don't think we'll get anybody, um, on a part-time rate, um, with no benefits or part-time probably. We have to pay maybe thirty five or forty dollars a month.
You have to set a rate so that.
Forty dollars a month.
How many hours?
Up to twenty, temporary staff, ten, ten, a hundred percent temporary, up to twenty.
And you'll have that lined out prior to that, okay?
What do you mean, Mike?
Just basically. Would not exceed.
That's all the basics of the ordinance, um, when we actually have somebody, uh, will get that information to Carolyn. See what she means from us for, for that pay.
So you don't have a person in mind right now?
I, I do, I have, uh, present a couple, yeah.
They shouldn't really start until they come back to approve that person, because that has to be on the payroll. Like I said, my auditors need to know who's getting paid out and that it's approved by the council. Because I could just write checks willy-nilly if I don't have a.
Could it be a ten ninety nine consulting? Well, generally you wouldn't, um, it, it, ten ninety nines are rough, um. You know, generally they have to have working for somebody else, they have to set their own parameters, that kind of thing.
Maybe then when you line that person up, would Dan and I need to meet with them? And then make sure it's on the agenda for, when's the next meeting?
The, the challenge will be, the, there'd be essentially no work done between now and the next episode meeting. So that would be the challenge. Um, I, I'm, I'm actually considering calling now, let me see if she'll help us. We gotta do something.
What happens if she decides not? Then we would have to need the other person's name or?
Yeah, she won't do it, I'll do it. Okay, so. Melanie, she won't do it, I'll do it.
Well, if, if we have Melanie for a name or minutes and.
I would.
Except this isn't on the agenda.
It can't be added to my.
Headed in the area.
Can we go?
Go to executive session? And can we talk?
Personal hiring, so I can inject it such, yeah, perfect.
So, quick question also, when we, when we come back for the next, uh, city council meeting and have. Different topics regarding the chamber and personal stuff, are we always gonna go, have to go back in the executive session for that?
If it's pertaining to.
And if you don't give me a list of what you wanna talk to the council about as every meeting, and you're expecting approval. It can't happen. It's gotta be listed on the agenda.
So it can't, under my chamber report, I can't make any requests?
Not unless it's listed on the agenda. I mean, you could give a report and update and all that. But if you're gonna ask the council to make a motion on something, it has to be on the agenda.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna say that that has happened before, Carolyn. Um, I know that the chamber have asked for different things and the ambulance and others, and it has happened where they've taken action.
So what you're saying is chamber report would be one line item and then detailed questions and what, what she's asking on a separate line item?
If I need to, if I need, if I need the council to take out.
Because even if you go back to like our minutes. From this, um, from the last meeting, those items that, that they talked about were. Indicated on the, on a breakdown asset.
Well, I do know during, um, I'm pretty sure the sidewalk sale was approved prior. And that wasn't, that was just through the chambers report. There's been other things on there that have been approved by the council under the chambers report. So I was a little confused as to when I need to do an agenda request and when I can, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll discuss that.
And executive. Okay, sounds good. Okay, so Carolyn.
Um, I was wanting to ask if we could change the second meeting in November to the seventh week. I have some travel plans.
When was, when was it? Instead of Thursday, the twentieth?
Yes, so that Monday to September instead of Thursday. I will be attending the NCL, NLC, uh, conference as, um. One of my roles and, um, municipal past president.
Regular meeting, the, okay, the sixth is.
The sixth is fine, yeah, just need to make the.
Goodbye me.
I need a motion for that.
Could be late.
Do you have a motion?
So move.
How's that move?
Second.
Your executive, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay.
Um, just an update that I will be attending a meeting in here on this Thursday for the strategic plan that municipal is looking on. And, um. Received notification from the FAA that we need to, we've had our current engineers for five years now. And every five years you have to allow for proposal from engineers, but. I'm working with, um, the past, uh, process that we did on that. And so I will be bringing more information on that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that that'll be taking place, so. And you can fully go with the same engineers we have, which I would totally recommend. They're awesome for anything that we've needed and they stay on top of things for me, which is very important with everything else that there is going on, so. But I will be keeping you informed on that, but just wanted to mention it now. And that's all I have.
Okay. So Katie, do you have anything?
Um, I do. Um, so to address the ACH and credit card fees that was brought up at the last council meeting. And just wanted to, um, clarify a few things and just let the council see if they wanted to. Um, make any decisions or talk about that, um. So just to preface it with, the change in the ACH base fees was not something that we were really aware that was gonna happen. It was turned on us because my report from a previous meeting was mentioned where it said that we found a process to streamline and speed up the ACH payments. And I really thought that that was the case and that was gonna be a really great thing, um, went through the work of putting everything into the system. And then we found out that we're, our software system is being transferred over. And we're gonna be on a cloud-based system, which is gonna be great, but with that, it's gonna be, um. The, the old way of processing those ACH payments is gonna be gone. So, uh, we've been given a date of October thirty first where we're gonna be transitioned to that cloud. And I think that's still in the works, it sounds like, so. Um, it was also mentioned that like council approval was needed to charge those fees, so actually it's the opposite of that. Um, we would need council approval to not charge those fees because it's, um, in order for the city of Wall to cover them on behalf of some of those residents. The total cost would exceed the amount allowed without council approval. Um, and we're not actually charging those fees, it's, um, the software company. So we would have to have the council approve the city paying them, basically.
What, Katie, what is the amount to a month on that?
We're getting there, get your pencil ready. Okay. And so just, uh, to be clear, like those fees are, they were not collected by the city of Wall. They're never deposited into a city of Wall account. Um, they're collected by a third-party company used by our software provider. And we also don't set that amount, they do. Um, so our only choice is whether the city absorbs those costs. Or if we pass them through to the residents who choose to pay by the ACH or their credit card. So, um, I've heard some people called and said that, you know, that paying those fees is just the cost of doing business and, um. And that other businesses are absorbing them for their customers. And I get that that appears that that's true, but those costs are still being covered somewhere. So, um, you know, typically you just have to raise your rate. So by not absorbing those fees, we're able to keep our utility rates as low as possible for the residents. Who do still prefer to pay by cash or check, um, and that is just over half of our customers. So, um, you know, you have to decide which end of that you're gonna. Like, if you wanna keep the rates low or if we were eventually possibly have to bump up to. like if you wanna keep the rates low or if we were eventually possibly have to bump up the rate to cover that. So Rick, here's your numbers, you ready?
Ready.
Okay, so currently um we have about sixty residents who are paying the credit card each month. And that fluctuates month to month as an average, I took an average over the past year. So and then in addition to those sixty residents that are paying by credit card, we have about a hundred and fifty accounts that are paying by ACH. Um, and then we have a total four hundred and thirty-five-ish meters. So um that's about two hundred and ten electronic electronic payments between the credit card and ACH. So then we're having about two hundred and thirty-five payments that are being still made by cash or check. So slightly over half of our residents are still coming in, dropping a payment in the box, um mailing a check, however they're choosing to do it. So um in twenty twenty-four, the ACH fees cost the city about forty to fifty dollars per month, I know Stan mentioned that. About about the forty to fifty dollars when we were able to run them the old way. Uh, I know that you said that you'd mentioned you'd seen that on the um on the financials. And then the credit card fees we were absorbing and for twenty twenty-four, they were two thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for twenty twenty-four. Um, and then so for so far in twenty twenty-five, uh, the city has paid three thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents in credit card fees. And to project it through the end of the year, it'll be about four thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. Just if we kinda go with the same pattern that it's been.
Credit credit card, Katie.
That's just credit card, yeah. And so then the ACH fees on the last month were five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents compared to that forty to fifty that we were paying when it was processed in the old way. Um, so if you look at that over a year, it's about six thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars just in the ACH fees that the city would have to pay. Six thousand two hundred and forty-nine just for the ACH and that's, these are just estimates because we haven't gone a full year, so I can't give you those numbers. So um the to add those two numbers together, an estimate with the credit card and the ACH, that's ten thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars ish um that if we were to cover those fees for less than half, a little less than half of our residents. So um if you wanted to look at that, would that would be split up over like a monthly, that's you know, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars a month. And if we would ever have to split that and do an increase because of that, it would be about a dollar ninety-nine for everybody, for all of those meters as an increase to the. Charge. Um, so you know, we still are happy to accept cash or check payments and then also I spoke with um Mandy at Black Hills Federal Credit Union and you know she had um and actually there was a few other people that came in that do bank over at First Interstate, they all offer or they both offer um their bill pay service. So if you are wanting to be on an automatic payment, you can all set up your bill as an auto- automatic bill pay. Um and so there are still fee-free ways to pay your bills. Um, and then our G-Works, our software sys- system, it's used by it's widely used by municipalities and it's been working really well for us um. I know it's been mentioned that that feels like a step backwards, but um our software representative, she explained it to me really well. I had a great conversation with her at the conference in Pier four weeks ago. So um she explained the reason for it and she said that previously the ACH um information was processed directly through their system. But due to the increased security risks, just overall in general, they don't really, they don't wanna take on that anymore. So that now they use a third-party processor. Um, and then you're all of our residents' financial information is more secure. So that is the reason why they moved away from processing it the way that they did, but now it's it's just, it's it's a different way that they're doing it. So um obviously it's your guys' decision, you know, if you wanna decide to pay those fees. Uh, but I just wanna make sure that you guys had all those numbers and were able to explain it and just clear some of those things up. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy.
Katie, what's the charge for that bill-paying service by First Interstate or?
Free, I don't think Andy said it's free and I believe First. Yeah, yes, you have to, and I know like I've made it First National, it's free that there, so as long as you have to deal with them.
I do have a concern that that only because of the the timing of our mail that we have, if we get bills, how many days do you allow for the check to collect pay the bill cash on the first to check out we pay by the fifteenth? We give the bill, the chances of you guys giving that check by the fifteenth?
Yes.
Are, you know.
Well, maybe that's something that we.
You charge it access.
Right now, we're not charging any late fees and haven't been with software change, but maybe that's something we need to look at with this change. Maybe we need to send that, I don't, I don't quite know how.
Yeah, currently our late fees take effect on the tenth, if you don't pay by the tenth, but like she said, we're implementing that right now with the changeover. And I can see us, because of the man issues. Like, you know, allowing, we'll say five days before we read meters to put that late fee on to people if they haven't paid by then, you know, I mean, I think that's a fair time frame if you haven't paid, because we usually read them every month.
Right.
As close as we can, so you've got almost twenty-five days to get paid, you know? And I think the mail will get the information for you then, but and we're willing to work with.
Went through with that vendor, about the third-party countries being changed.
Not that I'm aware of, but there is always changes to software as you're working through best please, so. It's changed from being a software system to a cloud-based, so I don't I wouldn't run that's not, but I do know that they've had some pretty big changes just recently, so I don't.
And Katie, you mentioned that it was way more um left, I don't remember what kind of you said, oh yeah, so how much, how much of your guys' time is it going to say dollarize by doing, by going with this?
You know, we'll have obviously a little bit more time, there'll there'll be more flash and check payments coming in. So there we will have a little bit more time starts entering those, but that is very, it doesn't take long to put those in. So compared to the manual manual entry that we were doing before, there'll be.
So it was manual entry when you accepted an ACH payment?
Yeah, we had to um put it into like a template at the, correct me if I'm saying anything is wrong, we had to put it into a template at the bank to run the payment, but then also then we had to go back into the software system and enter and each one of those payments individually into the system because it wasn't doing that all at once. Well, I was so excited because I found like this way that we could put it in so that all of that was done at once, it was supposed to make this nice Nacho file for us and it was gonna cut out a whole step. And then right when I figured that out, they took it away and said that now we're gonna do a cloud-based system and you have basically, like they said, well, we could do this for like a month. And then it could be gone, so it it's changes, we're not, you know, it it's not gonna pretty change for us too, but we do have to figure out a way to move forward and um decide on how that's gonna work, so.
But did I understand, there's more than half of the utilities that are using either check, cash or?
Yeah, yeah.
Minor are fewer numbers.
Yeah, it's about, it's it's a little over half, it's two two hundred and thirty-five or so people are still being paid by cash and check, two hundred, I think it was two ten are using electronic payments, um that number I mean it changes a little bit, because you know, obviously somebody who usually pays by check might all of a sudden blast and I go, oh but you know, I forgot to do it and go pop in a credit card payment or something. Um, you know, my concern would also be like if the city just did decide to pay these fees that possibly you'd be looking at a whole lot more people deciding, oh well, that's, you know, I'm gonna switch to that and maybe we're gonna get significantly more people paying by electronic payment and that number would increase significantly too. I don't know if that would happen, maybe not, but it could um. Yeah, so is there any other questions or?
So that'd be clear. So that two dollars a household would go up, the more people would use it, you divided that out, they're down to about ninety-nine or something? If we added it to each household?
Yep, and that and that's at the current, you know, amount now, obviously if we get a hundred more people doing electronic payments, that number would increase and that map would increase because that's divided out between everybody's meters, so if if all of a sudden it's ten thousand, you know, I don't know, five thousand more dollars worth of fees that we have to pay, that's when it all up and you're gonna look at three dollars more per household or, you know, just this way is, I mean, it is saving to where we don't have to fuss that on, because it has to be made up somewhere. Yeah.
This seems like that the um citizens have some some options that you know, you know, if they have a bank account, well, they they can do uh the bill pay service, no expense, that's cool. They can write a check, they can pay cash, if they want the convenience of ACH, the credit card, there's gonna be a fee, I don't know, I think that's probably the way it should be.
Yeah.
It doesn't, and and then, you know, if if you're gonna negate those charges and just spread it across, it doesn't seem like it's fair to the people that are paying cash or using the bill pay service or or check.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, for us, it'd be just totally easier easier if it all went in as an ACH and the city decided to pay the fees and it would be we would never have to touch it again, that's totally easiest for us us in the office, but that's not what's probably financially maybe the right thing to do when you're looking at that high of amount, but if, you know, your guys is. It is, it is a large amount, um, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Any other questions?
But if anybody has any questions, if you think of anything, please let me know and if I don't have an answer for it, I'll try to figure it out because it took some time to come up with numbers and stuff, but I'm happy to do that. Okay, and then the only other thing that I had, I just wanted to say thank you to Garrett and Trevor and Brandon. His last Wednesday uh for employee lunch, they helped me completely keep clean up the kitchen cabinets in the community center. We were kinda talking about some updates, so while we were doing that, they um helped to, they, we took everything out and we threw away more old stuff out of those cabinets than I even realized it was there. And I tried to tackle it a few different times before by myself, but either I couldn't figure out what to get rid of or I got pulled away in the middle of it, so with their help, we knocked it out in about an hour and got rid of a lot of stuff and the kitchen looks great, so. Just wanna say the willing willingness of all of our city employees to pitch in and help each other out whenever it's needed is hard to find and that's definitely very much appreciated because that was a big task, so thank you guys, awesome.
Okay. Garrett, do you have anything for local workers?
No, like Katie said too, we were in the kitchen and we have some ideas to uh update it, you know, just get different sinks in there and get rid of one sink, you know, just kinda, you know, we've updated a lot of other stuff. And I think right now, I guess Katie, some of the sink, the faucets we.
Yeah, the one if you turn it on, if you hit it just right, it'll kinda spray.
And so we're looking at some options and like some chlorine and stuff, do you just that? Out a lot, costs a lot, but it'll just freshen it. Um, and then pretty much we're just getting ready for winter and we're starting winterizing. And so winterizing the sprinkler systems in the park bathroom and get all that ready and I did we have the street committee report on there and I did read the Ted today and we kinda discussed it. You guys went over and went out to uh echo and kinda looked at the bike path. Or, I didn't say bike path, walking path or whatever it may be out there, so we got some challenges, but
And pass on things I was supposed to do at last meeting, but um on the corner of Eighth and Dorothy there, that um asphalt that was coming or breaking on it, you guys fixed it?
Yep.
Or there's a couple people around the community, there's a thing, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right.
Done spraying mosquitoes? I don't know how they are around town, but they're horrible through the ball field.
Did last night take care of them or no?
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if anybody's noticed though.
Okay, so moving forward, um yes, as um Garrett put it to the street committee and I did meet with on the city engineer, so Stan or Rick, would you like to do a quick report on that?
Uh, well. We met at that today and so we mostly just went over the drainage situation and which there are challenges there as you know, uh but we did kind of decide that we probably go ahead and spend a little money and have to do some, I don't know, surveying. Starting on the north side of it, south side of the interstate to wherever. That was past the apartments. So that's what we kinda had. Kinda see where we're at there and he was also gonna talk to the DOT and see if there's, I'll do some other options.
Yeah, because a lot of that, like the water.
A lot of our water.
This water.
And that's outside of it.
Yeah, all this water right here runs into that little drainage and then all of this water here runs over here.
There's hardly any that goes this way, but I don't know.
Anyway, he was gonna do some checking and yeah. We had checked that out once a year ago, not just a no-go or anything's changed.
Did you say that some of the survey work they do with uh drones?
Yeah.
Drones fly around, which I thought was interesting.
Yeah, they're okay, but they had that they did the fire investigation for Roost deal and they had a deal that would just just three D scanned and it took all the measurements and it's crazy what those things could do there and that's what the drone does too.
Well, and and like with our drainage issues in town, which are really complicated, we we could use all the technical help we could get, so I I think that we're moving ahead and uh getting a survey of a a fair amount of it is really a step in the right direction.
And this was brought up uh about because of the June, a lot of rain we got in a very short time, so.
And a lot of lakes, but you know, some of those you matter what you do. You know, when I, when it was raining then, I went, I looked at my backyard and I had water standing in my backyard and I never had water in my yard.
Any other coming from that then? Thank you, Stan, Karen, that, okay. October eleventh, I um was invited to the Badlands National Park premiere of the new video that they did on um the Badlands. And some new things are going on down there at the park that is going to affect us in the coming summer, I believe. Uh, they are working on a new visitor center down there or they're designing one and that's nearly funded. Uh, the other thing is the fact that it's um been designated, the park has been designated as International Dark Skies. Uh, so that is gonna bring a whole new layer of visitors that are interested in watching the stars at night, so that's new programs that are coming and they've got um quite a aggressive agenda set up to put that in place, so we can expect um some benefits, I think. In the very near future from what they're doing there. Uh, also the concern form that we got the last meeting, um that has all been taken care of, the owner of the um facility we were, that was concerned has been found, another person has stepped up and he has that property mode, weed edif, debris removed. The front step is now a safe step for residents and it's no longer a nuisance, so without even sending a letter or having to make any contacts. Um, they happened to watch the video from the last meeting and picked up on that and reached out to me, so that's a done deal. And then I also wanted to mention that um with grateful appreciation because the public works um built this whole new consultation, saved amazing amount of money doing that. saved amazing amount of money doing that. And our technology now has a storage place and the nameplate for the artisans is right there in front of Stan, uh, so that they can be remembered for that. And then I hope everyone noticed the beautiful logo that is in the front and Katie, you did that. So, as I said, with grateful appreciation for saving us money, uh, working together on that and getting our a new table for us that everybody, buddy can sit together. That completes my report. That moves us to item number twenty-two. And are there any other items for discussion, but no action will be taken? Okay, hearing or seeing none, the next, uh, city council meeting is going to be November sixth at six thirty. That's a regular night, that isn't a Thursday night. That won't be state football or anything like that. No, or playoff game, we're good there, right? Okay. Just thought of that.
This game.
Volleyball.
Well, yeah.
Volleyball.
I think, oh, I think this game and the next game are the
Thursdays.
Thursdays and the semi.
Seventh or the, thirty, the seventh is semi.
Okay, what'd you say about volleyball, is that a playoff game?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. Whether the girls will play it or not, that's.
All right. They'd have three games, okay, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, um, with that, I believe we need an executive session.
I made a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, legal personnel issues according to STCL one dead twenty-five dash two. Here on parentheses.
What?
Three.
Three.
And, and one.
And one.
Second.
Second and all those in favor say aye.
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 Most, most in favor. Okay, I call us out, um, executive session, um, and the next item is action following executive session, we have a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we hire Ally Webster for a temporary position with the chamber uh, for under twenty hours a week, not to exceed six months, uh, if that position is not filled by her, Melanie Scholl, at also forty dollars an hour for under twenty hours a week for up to six months.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Is there, uh, any other motion?
I've made a motion that we contact our public insurance alliance regarding the summons we receive. We were served to the city.
Say.
Okay, it's been moved by Stan, seconded by Jerry, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Is there any other, um, items uh, that needs to be brought before the council tonight? Hearing none. Meeting mature.